Sorry to hear that.
For granted.
Just my grandfather said, if you're not early, early. I apologize. Didn't even have time to grab my laptop. This is okay. Good evening, everyone. Sorry to keep everyone waiting. Mr. Ginta, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
An equal measure of congratulations and condolences. Excited to have you, though.
Good to see you.
Where have we opened the meeting?
We just started.
Fairly. Great, just keep going. Do you think we already did?
We did nothing.
Okay, great. Well, thank you and sorry to keep waiting here. So, welcome, everyone, to the zoning Board of Appeals for this evening, March 26, 2024. My name is Rob Champetti. I have the privilege of serving as chair. And to my immediate left, we have Mr. Ken Swanton, our vice chair. To his left, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary. To his left, Mr. Greta Gregory Benick, also a member of our zoning Board of Appeals, Ms. Lynn Scout, and our newest associate member. Duly appointed and duly confirmed by our city council. So again, welcome and thank you for being here. We have Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, and Andy Fort, our planning director, and of course Gretchen Joy, our tireless keeper of the minutes. She's writing down everything we say. I'm going to call the roll. We'll start our forum and then we'll get into our first request for minor modification, which is for Riley Avenue. We have, of the three applications this evening, two of them have been requests. One has been a withdrawal. And we'll take that matter on. And then we have another one that we received a request for a continuance. That's H Jefferson Court. We'll take those first so that anyone who may be here or may be listening. Are we still doing time group?
Yeah.
Yeah. To the extent there's anyone following along online, they'll know that they don't need to stick around if they're here for those two applications. So members of the ZBA kindly just respond with here or present when I call your name. Mr. Ken Swanton, here. Mr. Stephen Delisle, here. Mr. Gregory Benick, here. Ms. Lynn Scout, here. Larry Ginta, present. And Rob Champetti, present. That's one, two, three, four, five, six members present. That is a quorum. And so I will designate, just for legal purposes, the five voting members will be myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Benick, and Ms. Scout. And in the event of any refusal, I think there may be one, Mr. Ginta will step up as our voting fifth member. Even if there is a member that is not voting, they still participate in all process of the evening, which is questions, deliberations, and such. So without further ado, what do we get into our business meeting? And the first matter we have that we will get started on before we get into public hearings is a request for minor modification. This is for Riley Avenue, application 24-10. Mr. Ginta.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair. So I'm here for a request for minor modification for Fort Riley Avenue. My name is George Hazelton of Winwood Shaw. I'm here on behalf of Casey Sullivan, who's the owner of Fort Riley Avenue. I'm here to request a minor modification to demolish an existing shed property and to replace that with a single bay car garage. The existing shed on the property sits within the side and rear setback. The plan is to remove that and install the single car there and be within the apartments of the side and rear setback as well as the lot coverage. This was a previous special permit granted to the former owners, Terry and Amy Leary. It is now coming for the board on behalf of Casey Sullivan, who's the owner of Fort Riley Avenue. I think if Caitlin, if you could maybe go to the site plan. I just would like to point out to the board, the existing shed and plan view, the southeast corner, that is to be removed and a new garage to be installed.
That's it. Great. All right. So thank you, Mr. Ginta. We may have questions. We'll go through the rounds at this point. So members of the ZBA, as you may well be aware, in taking on requests for minor modification or any modification, we first sort of pull ourselves on each other as to whether we are in agreement with the notion that it is minor versus major. And if it is minor, you know, we can undertake to deliberate or ask any questions. So let's start with, since this is before us, I'd just like to sort of delve and suspend this. I'll ask the question of the audience. Is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard or wish to speak in connection with the request for minor modification that's before us? Seeing no hands in the room. Can you tell me if there's anyone on, if there's anyone online that was on online? Okay. So with that, we will go to sort of any questions from the board. Since it's minor modification, we can informalize it a bit. We don't have to go in any specific order, but does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hazelton or any questions? No? No hands? Then I can go ahead and close questions. Why don't we go into deliberations and beginning with Mr. Swanton? A, is it, do you feel it's minor in nature, sufficient proceeding? So, you know, let's deliberate the requests as to whether it's appropriate. We can move down the line and see what everyone thinks and then take a vote after all.
Yes, I actually do think this is minor. Basically, a shed in the very corner is being replaced with a garage that is, has, needs all the proper setbacks. It's a conforming garage. So it's, so I see this as minor.
Excellent. Mr. Delisle.
Yeah, I agree that it's minor. I guess I should have asked a question at the questioning period. I do think it's minor, but one thing that caught my eye was in the decision that was approved a couple of years ago, the shed looks like it goes off the property on that. And now it doesn't. So I just wanted to understand what happened and.
Sure, great question, Mr. Delisle. Previous owners, Terry and Amy, I think when they went before the zoning board for their special permit, I think there may have been an agreement with them, private agreement with them and the neighbors, to just slide their shed forward. I think that what they probably should have done is probably came before the board and said, hey, I'm moving my shed a few feet here. But they didn't. And we actually caught that when I did the survey. Jennifer caught it and said, hey, you know, this shed has been moved. I said, there must have been private agreement with Mr. Leary and the rear neighbor.
Yeah, okay, okay. And it looks like it got picked up on the lot coverage information. Yeah, okay. All right, that's good. Yeah, and I agree with Mr. Swanton, this is minor.
That's good. Great. Mr. Benick.
I agree.
Ms. Scout.
I agree with that as well.
Mr. Ginta.
I agree. It actually looks like the garage is being moved more away from the property lines than the existing shed is now. So.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I, did you have anything else?
No, no.
Great. Yeah, I feel this is minor and certainly in keeping with what we've ordained to be, you know, fairly modest modification. So I do find this minor and I feel like it's supported as well. Unless there's any further deliberations, I'll close that portion and entertain a motion to, a motion to approve, but also as part of that motion, there should be a finding that it's a motion to deem the request minor and then a motion to approve minor modification. So it's kind of a two-fold motion, I'll ask for.
What's the name of the board? I'll make a motion to deem the request minor and approve the minor modification request for Fort Riley Avenue.
Very good. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Scout. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Ms. Scout, calling the roll. Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Benick.
Yes.
Ms. Scout.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I have a guess. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. Motion carries and matter is minor and it is approved. Thank you, Mr. Board. Very good. All right. Thank you. Moving to our public hearings, I'm going to take the two that will be taken off the agendas. We'll take care of those first and then we'll get into 14 Payson Street. So the first matter that we have, this is going out of order, where we have a request for continuance, is Joel and Meredith Lubick, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talaman and Costa, H Jefferson Court. The matter is continued from 2/13/2024 and it's a variance request. Variance for a front yard setback or an addition of an attached garage with a new front entry and mudroom. We have a request to continue this application to April 23. Does the applicant wish to be heard on the request or can we just take on the request?
That's a request.
Great. So do we have a motion to continue the application to 4/23 in a second?
I'll make that motion to continue H Jefferson Court, DAR 24-3, to the meeting of April 23, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Benick. Motion's made and seconded on the request to continue 4/23, calling the roll on that motion of Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Benick.
Yes.
Ms. Scout.
Yes.
Rob Champetti. Yes, that's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. Matter is continued to 4/23. The other out of order application is a request for withdrawal. Amy McGoughlin, Vino, 7 Mosley Avenue, to as a special permit to allow home occupation use 417B. The motion has been made, sorry, the request has been made to withdraw without prejudice. Do we have any comments from the board? And in the absence of that, do we have a motion to, to allow the applicants withdrawal without prejudice? Mr. Swanton.
I'll make a motion to accept the request to withdraw the special permit application without prejudice for 7 Mosley Avenue.
Very good. Motion's made and we have a second. I'll second that. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion's made and seconded on the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice, the application for 7 Mosley Avenue, calling the roll, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Benick.
Yes.
Ms. Scout.
Yes.
Rob Champetti. Yes, that's five in the affirmative. Ayes have it. Motion carries, matter is withdrawn for the docket without prejudice. So spooling back up to the beginning of our public hearings, we have the application of John Patton and Julie Christie, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talaman and Costa LLC. The application is a continuation from February 13, 2024. On the property address, 14 Payson Street, it is a special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, and approvals for the renovation of a single-family house, including the removal of existing, an existing second-floor bay window and the addition of a second story to the west side and the second-floor deck of the rear structure. Any of you here? Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, just a guess this morning. I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. So Mr. Delisle's recusal, that means that our five voting members are myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Benick, Ms. Scout, and Mr. Ginta. All right. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, I'm Ben Taylor, attorney at Mead Talaman and Costa, 30 Green Street in Derryport, for the record. Here tonight on behalf of the applicants and owners of Fortune Payson Street, Jack Patton and Julie Christie. They live there, single-family home with their three children. Again, we're here tonight requesting a special permit for non-conformities. Obviously, if the chairman read, goes the initial project, it's since been simplified quite a bit. We're alone here tonight asking for a slight increase to the non-conforming lot area. So we'll show that as we look forward to the plans. So just a quick rundown of the existing conditions. Again, it's a single-family home located in the R2 district. There's also the DCOD. It has existing non-conformities for lot area, frontage, front and rear setback, and lot coverage. It's affirming, it conforms with all of the initial requirements. So if we go to the next slide, please. So really just some background. Again, back in the summer of 2023, when this application was initially filed, it was a lot more, for lack of a better word, intense, a lot more visual addition to the structure. They're actually proposing to remove the front left or portion of the front left side of the house, and just construct a two-story addition in its place. That's no longer proposed. So I'm going to refer to the board tonight. Now, again, the only expansion of an existing lot coverage, non-conforming by two tenths of a percentage from 32.1% to 32.3%. Again, you'll see in the photos in a moment, it's not, it's more like a shed type of bulkhead. You know, I first heard that, I thought it was like the, you know, the two metal floors that you see on a lot of houses moving down. And there are a few other by right elements of the project, but there's no other would be required. So go to the next slide, please. Center of the site plan. It is a little bit more nicely of the bulkhead. That's good. So you see on the left side of the house, the smaller of the two orange rectangles. You can see that the front one, there's actually a smaller one within it, the dashed lines, that's the existing bulkhead. They proposed to expand that a little bit to the front and back of it. It's to serve the means of the rest of the basement. They plan on, you know, refinishing the basement, making it more usable for their family. So again, that's what we're here for tonight, is that increases the lot coverage slightly. There also are, again, I mentioned some by right elements to the project. So there's also a proposed open access stairwell. You can see that behind. That's the larger of the two rectangles on the left side of the house. Then finally, there's a by right, second-story deck on the rear structure. That actually was part of the original proposal, but as was noted in the zoning determination issued by the zoning code enforcement officer, that's in a by right location. It's not within rear yard setbacks or any of the other setbacks. It doesn't contribute or expand any existing non-conformities. I'm just going to the next slides, please. So here you have existing on the top, it goes on the bottom. Top left is the left side setback, it has exists. And then bottom is the proposed. On the right side is the front, excuse me, front elevation and the bottom is the proposed. We actually have the proposed in just the full side pages, so that might be easier to see. So if you just go to the next slide, please. But again, this is existing on top, the right side on the left, the rear on the right side of the sheet. Then again, proposed on the bottom. Go to the next slide, please. So here's the proposed front elevation again, it's just a single sheet, so it might be easier to see. You can see the proposed bulkhead has slightly expanded on the left side, you know, bottom left of the house. And actually, you'll see in a photo, you know, while this is a line drawing, you see it square on, there actually is some vegetative screening there, as well as, that's where the driveway is. So there usually, you know, someone's home is a car parked there. So it's really, you know, hard to see if it all from the street. I would go to the next slide, please. So there on the center, under the window, the central, also the circular window, you can see the bulkhead. So it's really just a little bit to the front of it that's being seen and a little bit to the back. Again, just widening it. And also you can see the open stairwell behind it. Go to the next slide, please. Again, this is just the proposed rear elevation. See the proposed secondary, second-story deck, where's the left there? And then finally, next slide, please. Again, here's just the proposed right side elevation. Just go to the next. So here's some photos. So you can actually see a portion of the bulkhead there. Here's where the majority of the changes will happen. Again, it's more of the shed-style bulkhead, so it does count towards lot coverage. Next slide, please. Here's just a slightly different view, the bulkhead being expanded. Next slide, please. Here's a view from the street. Again, this was taken in the summer of 2023, until things are more in bloom. Also, the car in the driveway, it's really tough to see the bulkhead at all. Again, here's just the front elevation. Again, you can see the vegetation just to the left of the entryway, which the bulkhead behind. The next slide. So as the board's aware, the criteria for a special permit for non-conformities for single-to-family structures, the first requirement is that no new non-conformity is being created. Here, there's no new non-conformity being created. It's just this slight increase of the non-conforming lot coverage. Then onto the second requirement is that the board finds that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use. Again, here we feel that it's a very, very minor expansion of the bulkhead. Again, it will be criminally visible in the streets. It's a two-tenths of a percentage increase to lot coverage. And when you actually do the math out, the lot coverage to the existing lot area comes out to about 12.4 feet, which is very small. Again, it's not out of place in the neighborhood. And actually, my clients did reach out to their direct of waters and they liked the neighborhood. That one, this is a much more intense proposal. Did receive non-opposition letters for the prior proposal, which is really a lot more visible than this. So that's all I have for now. I didn't include the mine, that's just for reference. And the slide behind this, if anyone wanted to view that, but have to answer any questions the board may have, but I'll turn it over to the chair. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll close the presentation portion and go to public comment. Anyone in our vast audience wish to speak in connection with this application? Speak now. Line wish to be heard? Okay. I'll close the Mr. Swanton.
I'm curious. You said it was far more expansive. I'm just curious, why did you shrink it down?
Yeah, I think it's a combination of factors. So one of which was the prior proposal also constituted a roofline change, so it qualified in the demolition delay ordinance. It's one of the interior goals that the clients had for their structure versus how it would change the roofline for their clients after receiving feedback of the historical commission, wanting to go away from anything that constituted a roofline change. So this is a result of
It was helpful to see a picture of the bulkhead. You know, I picture a bulkhead as this little thing, and you don't open up the doors even. So this is pretty tall. What is the, is this bulkhead like an entry to the basement or?
Can I?
Sure.
Can I?
Sure.
I'm Jack Patton, so I thank you guys, I thank the board for taking in our case today. The, we intend to dig out our basement. And in order to gain the landing code, we need to move the bulkhead slightly in order to gain the two feet or the three feet of landing as we dig down the entry.
I see. Okay. Well, that was, you answered my next question, which is why you were standing the bulkhead. Well, thank you.
We saw that the, just kind of, we, our, our design on our roof change was, was not agreeable to the historical commission. So they said to look at, look at square footage for our family somewhere inside the current structure. So our attic has two more foot chimneys and your square footage is not there. So our next step was to have a more elaborate project and dig out our basement.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. It really helps fill out kind of why you're here.
I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton.
Can you tell me the dimensions of the existing bulkhead and the proposed bulkhead?
Sure. So I think we go to the proposed left side elevation. Yeah, then you can zoom in essentially there on the bulkhead. So the existing bulkhead, I know this is just the length of it. You have four feet and a quarter inch, and then you're adding on one foot, seven and three-eighths inches to the front of it, and then three feet. Up to a total of nine feet length. And I don't have the exact width of the lip, but I know on the site plan, it's not widening out any further.
Max thirty.
Max.
It's a clapboarded or what's the?
The existing bulkhead is not one.
Yeah, I just, could you explain to me what?
Yeah, and actually, they do welcome so procedurally, when we have revisions that not observed, Mr. Jeffrey Blanchet, just to see if the, you know, required relief is the same. So we did that once we got the plans back from the designer. She found that the new plans don't constitute demolition under the ordinance, so it don't apply to any demolition delay. I do understand that administratively, I think it's on the agenda for this Thursday's historical commission meeting. However, that does not mean or constitute any approval of the prior set of plans. So anything moving forward in the future that constitutes a roofline change or demolition under the ordinance will have to go back to the historical commission. I don't know if Caitlin or Andy want to chime in on just the demolition delay administratively being with it or?
You probably, that's probably great. Thank you.
Mr. Ginta.
The only question I had is, one of the sites you had said with the original plan, it had no opposition from the neighbors. Was the bulkheads in that plan or is this a secondary plan?
Sir, so what do you, so this is, what do you mean by secondary?
Was the bulkheads in the original plan?
I don't believe it was proposed. I actually do have the plans that were filed. I don't believe it was.
The bulkhead not in the original plan. The original plan was to, if you were to look at that, the roofline in the center of that picture, is to extend it and square off the house. Take the, the three windows on the right are a front porch. We're going to take that down and then take that roofline and go all the way to the far end. And our design was they deemed it, was not Queen Anne Victoria.
So then you went to the secondary plan, picking up the basement. So now we're here for the bulkheads because you need that to get that done.
We need, we need, in order to meet code, our, in order to meet code on the landing, we have to move bulkhead. We need certain foot. And the existing bulkhead, it didn't come down.
And did I see where the asphalt is, that that would be cavers? Did I see that on there?
Right now, that's, our driveway is on the whole, the whole, that side of the house. And we plan to make that more of a outdoor space. And we'll use half the, we'll use half the driveway. Right now, our driveway goes all the way back to the secondary structure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. I don't have any further questions. I think my colleagues had asked, sort of, the only one that I had. So if there's any other questions, now would be the time. And if not, I'm going to close that portion of our public hearing and go to deliberations. And again, this is a special permit for non-conformities. So I'll ask that we tailor our deliberations around the prongs and criteria for a special permit under our zoning code. Beginning with Mr. Swanton.
Okay, well, there's two-pronged test. First test is, are there any new non-conformities that are created by what you're proposing? And there are none. So it satisfies that one. That comes down to, you know, it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, does this make it worse effectively, sort of more, more non-conforming than it is now? I mean, if we want to be a total stickler, I mean, the coverage is going up by .1. Lot coverage and you're already over, but you know, it's 12 square feet. I can't, you know, to me, that's pretty minimal. So I don't, I don't see how this is significantly more of a problem than what's there now as far as conformities go. So I can support this application.
Benick?
Yeah. The relevant inquiry is whether or not an increase of two tenths of a percent in lot coverage is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. That's certainly, in my opinion, is not the case. This is a rather easy analysis under a request for non-conformities, a permit for non-conformities. So I have no objection to this. It's, it meets the criteria handling.
Very good. Ms. Scout.
I would agree with my colleagues. It does not create a new non-conformity, and I don't think the addition of 11-foot lot coverage is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I would be inclined to support it.
And Mr. Ginta.
I'm going to, I will support this also. I think this is minor. I think it's an improvement to the house. I don't, I don't see any objections from the neighbors since it's small. I don't, I don't see any objections from the neighbors since it's a small item.
Yeah, I agree. My colleagues, I think it's, it's very modest. It's, some might even argue it's de minimis, but it certainly does rise to the level of being substantially more detrimental. So I too can support it. I also note that, you know, in the face of butter notices, we as a board have received no, you know, adverse comments or commentary or concerns from any of the immediate butters, who would be those most impacted and or potentially aggrieved if they felt, you know, along those lines. And we don't see that, that, that's, the silence speaks as loudly as, you know, as, as loud words to me when it comes to that. So I too can support this. We'll close that deliberations and go to a motion. Do we have a motion to approve in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for 14 Pace Street.
Very good. Mr. Swanton's motion to approve and.
Second.
Mr. Ginta gets his, Mr. Ginta's on the board. Motion with a second. Motion's made and seconded on the, on the motion for the special permit for non-conformities, 14 Pace Street, calling the roll. Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
The scout.
Yes.
Mr. Ginta.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, yes, that's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it and the motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you for your patience this evening. All right, our second and last public hearing this evening is Richard. To construct an addition that results in a lateral and upward extension of a pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback. And I'll just note for the record that Mr. Delisle is back out of regusel. So our five voting members are once again myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennett, and the scout. Sir, how are you?
Then there was one.
Then there was one.
I'm fine.
Very good.
Well, we've got an aerial view there that doesn't tell you the whole.
I hate to be so too congratulated, you should introduce yourself just for our keeper of the minutes, just.
Okay, I'm Richard True.
We can guess.
The proposed contractor. So I'm representing Joy and Dome, the owner. Thank you, sir. Why don't we go to the existing first? Okay, there's the existing. It's a certified plot plan that's been done recently. And there are non-conformities on the, you know, let's get our orientation right. I'm not going to use points of the compass. It's as viewed from the street, left and right, front and back. There are non-conformities to the left and to the front. The existing conforms to the right lot line and to the rear. Now, that proposed. The living space above it. So we still have. But to the front, it is, it's further back than the existing house. So we did not extend the non-conformity. What's next? Uh, the, the coverage? I can't see it. Anyway, we did the calculations on the coverage. Was that the coverage? No, that's the sets. But we already went over that. This is the front elevation showing the existing and the proposed. Now, the next one, I think, is the end elevation, the right end. There's the right end that gives us our heights. And then I think there's a rear elevation. Well, that's rear elevation once again. The delineation from the proposed part to the left in the existing. And I think they showed a section, some floor plans. First floor floor plan, that's. And the second floor and maybe a section. Just to show you that I can draw a nice section. As far as I understand, and in, in working with the people at the city hall, and having done quite a few projects like this, we were not extending any non-conformities. But we meet the lot coverage. The heights. Is there anything I'm missing? Any questions or? Things I left out?
Well, I'll tell you what, and thank you for the presentation, Mr. True. We, we can close the presentation for now, and then we may have questions and those who asked you.
Sure.
If we have one.
Okay.
So thank you for the presentation. Closing that portion of the hearing, we will ask the vast audience in our, in our room here, if there's anyone who wishes to make any public comment. Seeing no hands and no people, and is there anyone online?
There's not personally.
And for our online participant, if you wish to be heard kindly, just let us know by raising your hand. And we will unmute your mic. And seeing no hands there, we'll close that portion and go right to questions from the board. And Swanton, any questions?
Um, yeah, not much really. I'm curious, what, what, could you comment upon the materials you're using for the addition, probably outside? Is it signing, is it collaborating?
It's going to be, it's going to be matching the existing, which is, it's a vinyl imitation of shingles, cedar shakes, basically. So the customer wants to match it. She would like to do the whole thing over and would, but can't afford it. So we're going to match the existing.
I got it. Okay, thanks for that. Don't have any questions.
That was my question too. So I don't have any further questions. Great, Mr. Bennett.
I have no question.
Did, did Mr. Swanton take your homework as well?
He did.
The scout.
I have no additional questions.
Mr. Ginta.
No questions.
And I don't either. It's very clear presentation, Mr. True. Thank you for that. It's, it's pretty straightforward. I'll close the questions from the board portion, and we can go right into deliberations. And again, we're deliberating a special permit for non-conformities. So we have to evaluate the substantiality of detriment, if any. And among other prong factors, Mr. Swanton, you want to jump in?
Sure. There are no new, there are no new non-conformity. And looking at the neighborhood, there are a lot of small houses, but quite a few of them have been expanded like this. In fact, I think one right across the street.
Quite a few.
Yeah, quite a few. So I don't see this as being out of character from a massing point of view with the, with the neighborhood. So I can support this application.
Very good. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Swanton. I, I too looked at the neighborhood and it looked like everything more or less had been built out already. So this is sort of the last one left. So I don't think that there's going to be any problems from a massing standpoint. No, no, any more of these. So I, I'm inclined to support this.
Very good, Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, I would agree in terms of size, massing, scale, the addition, although it's modest, not large. Certainly is, parts with the neighborhood, it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I think I support this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, the scout.
Yeah, I would agree with all of that. And I would say, even though it's, it's a large, it's next to, next to the house, it's still quite within all of the lot coverage requirements. And it's not out of character for the neighborhood. So I think that's good.
Very good, Mr. Ginta.
I would support this as, as somebody who lives on the West End, that this is the type of additions that we.
Thank you, Mr. Ginta. I, I agree. I, I think it's a modest request. It's certainly sensitive to the rest of that neighborhood. In fact, I think as someone pointed out, maybe it was some, Mr. Swanton, it's, or maybe it was Mr. Bennett, it was one of the last of its kind. To sort of see this very modest improvement, so I too can support it. Any further deliberations? All right, Sina, we'll close that. Do we have a motion to approve in a second?
Excuse me, there was a proposed special condition.
I do want to discuss the special, the proposed condition and allow they share with, with Mr. True. So Mr. True, sometimes we are, not sometimes, oftentimes, we're, we're counseling, giving some information along the way in our staff reports and other materials from the planning office to help guide us in our, in our work. And sometimes it's proposed to us to consider special conditions that go with our approvals. If the board is inclined to approve, it appears we have something before us now to consider. So we share with you at this point so that you can have, you know, a fair sense of, of what's being asked. What's the, the language of the special condition? It is. The applicant shall install a new street tree in accordance with the specifications provided by the Department of Public Services. We always put out, you know, for sidewalk and tree ordinance compliance, sometimes we get feedback. Any objection, is this agreeable?
Sure.
All right, we appreciate that. And with that.
There's somebody I have to check with, I guess, with the species, this.
Exactly, public services.
Okay. They'll give you the, the rundown of the, of the species of trees and help sourcing and such.
Which is the tree warden, what have you?
Correct. Thank you. Very good, thank you, sir. All right, with that, do we have a proposal for a motion to approve with special condition in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities of six meters roam. With the special condition that the applicant shall install one new street tree in accordance with specifications provided by the Department of Public Services. Set improvement shall be completed prior to building permit and closeout.
Very good, we have a second. Second that. All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion's weighed by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Delisle, calling the roll on the motion to approve with special condition, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle. Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
The scout.
Yes.
And Mr. Ginta. Apologies. Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is five in the affirmative, the eyes have it. Motion carries. Good luck to you, Mr. True, and thank you for your patience today.
Thank you, it's the world's record in my 46-year career.
We're all about. Trying to break our record. It's a mistake there.
This is exactly what you meant for us.
Thank you very much. It's, it's a short evening, right? So we, we have that going for us, which is all to rest. Okay, we have no further business. I'm going to close the building, the public hearings portion. And in our business meeting, we have the approval of corrections minutes from February 12th, 2024. Any modifications or changes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh, there was one that, I don't know if you want to mention it.
All right, I can, well, you're quiet enough. Oh, and you know what? It's so funny, I can't see right behind this, I'm missing, because I'm on my laptop, I'm like, there's a magic screen.
If you look at special condition number three for 87 High Street. They read, the applicant shall hire our best trainer, including Cedar Pedro between the property 8385 High Street and shall preserve the Cedar Pedro throughout reconstruction process and afterwards. The and afterwards.
It's not technically part of the motion. But together with that, it definitely came up in discussion earlier, and I'd just like to see reflected in the minutes.
Yeah.
That, that the applicant said that they would keep the hedges, you know, after destruction as well. They were very clear about that. So I'd like that to be added to the minutes as well. Can you take those two words out, please put it up above? All right. The only other thing I have is I think Jared's name is not Odi, it's Evi. Jared, Jared. All right, somewhere up there, Jared. Right there, it's Jared Igerman, he's second to last paragraph on page two. Any other, thank you, by the way. Swanton, any other revisions or comments? Otherwise, a pretty pristine document, as always. I don't know how you get it all right. And there's like, we went four letters that were slightly off, out of pages and pages.
It's pretty good. Very nice. Seriously, that's, it's pretty good, and we really appreciate it. And also, while we're just talking so much.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes? So, all right, motion made and seconded by.
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Voice vote, all those in favor of approval of minutes, say aye. All right, and he opposed those, maybe for abstentions, none. Eyes have a motion carries. Minutes are approved. Other updates from the chair? I don't have any unless you have any here.
No, I believe Karen's from Merve Ascent Lane, will be here at the April 23 meeting. And we can talk about certain regular special permits in general. She'll get any questions. We're still going to have any applications, they're fully filed, but we're expecting effectively two, so.
Okay, so she is going to come and talk to us?
She, yeah, she may be on Zoom, she may be on Zoom, but she will be here if there's any direct questions. And she'll also get some feedback back to you.
I, I had one question, it slipped out of our lane a little bit, but really, not really. The, since you're sort of the tip of the spear, or one of the tips of these spears on the waterfront redevelopment and renovation, how, how are things looking versus that sort of projected timeline? Will it be ready for prime time, so to speak?
Yeah, so we're expected to be complete by the end of May, you know, give or take a few days, you know. But to get even at another, and see if it's possible for everybody to enjoy. Not sure that that's a good time or bad for perspective, but we've had a little bit of difficulty in the natural grid, but they've been extremely helpful in the last couple of weeks. And we're hopeful that they will deliver transformers, which is a difficult part of the construction project, it's only like.
That's been the whole branch transformer pieces.
Actually, well, the whole of it started with some design details and natural grid. A little while, I first went back and pointed at that one. So by the end of the day, then, had the impact because it wouldn't give it the critical, so they threw the design and see the installation of the field. And we said, well, you can't get the installation of the field because you're. So anyway, all things, you know, at the end of the day, it seems like we're on schedule and they're going to come in and they get our balls, we're done with it and get out of there.
And I understand it's been like almost a pristine safety record over there too. So like, no, no big issues, which for a project like that, next to a swimming river with lots of heavy equipment. Yeah, I can't, you know, like.
Well, don't forget, most of that, probably the year, similar to the bulkhead side, that's just the two summer project, but right next to each other.
Yeah.
That's, you know, oversee most of that stuff. And the PTT, we're doing that project and HOX Construction, doing the park construction, side by side, working together. There have been periodic constructions, temporarily the walkways or the fish pier, things like that.
I mean, from the public's perception, the passerby perception, it's a singular project.
Yeah.
And so I think the, the big takeaway is that people see it as efficient, big operation of multiple parts and lots of heavy equipment, all next to really deep, cold, fast water.
Yeah.
You know, like that. That's great.
It's, we're not very lucky this season with weather, you're relatively speaking, so. So yeah, hopefully, we're very well able to enjoy it, put our parks as freely.
Very nice. Thank you, guys.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? So, all right, was the paper up?
All right.
All right, thanks, guys. Have a great night and glad to see you.